Good evening, and welcome to the June monthly meeting of the East Whiteland Board of Supervisors. I am not Scott Lambert. Scott is, uh, could not make it tonight. He had a family event. Unfortunately, he lost his mother-in-law last week at 99 years old. So, very impressive. So, we're in order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would like to introduce the, everyone up at the table here. Again, my name is Richard Orlo and the Vice Chair, running the meeting because Scott is not here. To my right is Peter Fixler, other member of the board. To my immediate left is Bernadette Kearney, our Township Solicitor, and far left is Steve Brown, our Township Manager. First item on the agenda is another sad event that occurred this past week. The township lost one of its valued volunteers. Chuck Barbera served on the Park and Rec Committee, was very active, very dedicated, very loyal to our township. Suddenly passed about a week ago. As you can see, there will be a celebration of life, June 17th, at the Columbia Grand on Bridge Street in Phoenixville. Everyone's, knew him welcome. And we will miss him dearly.
I just like to add, I knew Chuck personally. He helped me buy a house. He was a steady hand in that process. He was a steady hand as a friend for advice. He was a steady hand on the Park and Rec Board. He was just a great guy to know, and it is very unfortunate. Him moving on to his next chapter of his life, unfortunately led him outside the township where he was such a valued member and volunteer. He was on to his next chapter in refurbishing a barn in Charlestown and cooking his meatballs, which he loved to do. I'm very sad for Allison and their family. I wish them all the best and my deepest condolences. Rest in peace.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to say, I, yeah, I only knew Chuck through work, but he was, you know, one of the friendliest gentlemen you could meet. He's from here, graduated from Great Valley. He was a great community member, owned a business on Lancaster Avenue, and as Rich and Peter said, was a very valuable member of the East Whiteland family and made a lot of contributions to our Park and Rec program. And in particular, our newest park, Backton Hill Park on Backton Hill Road, not coincidentally. But if you haven't seen it, go see it sometime. Chuck put a lot of time and effort into it, as did other people, but Chuck was really a driving force to get that done, and, you know, he will be missed dearly, but not forgotten.
Thank you, Peter and Steve. If anyone has any words they'd like to say, feel free. If not, please join us in a moment of silence and in Chuck's memory. Thank you. Thank you. And, okay, we'll move on. Board briefings. We had an executive session. The agenda refers to June 11th. We had it yesterday so that Scott could join at 4:30 for legal, personal, and real estate matters. We might do that in the future, have it the day before, but we'll see. We'll see. Next is grant awards. Catherine? Skip grant awards for the moment and go to Park and Rec updates with Larry, our Director.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Can you hear me? All good?
Yes, we're good.
Perfect. So, brief updates to Parks and Recreation, obviously want to honor Chuck's passing and his legacy. I think a large reason why I'm here is due to his passion and work, and I don't, that's not lost to me. And to that point, we had our first Chill on the Hill concert series, something that he was very passionate about bringing to East Whiteland Township. Last week, we had Dean and Company and local resident and individual Matt Saintry perform. Rescheduling twice due to the rain. We saw a great turnout. The night was a beautiful night. Last Wednesday, they had about 300 people come out, and our first concert fight was able to get off the ground, and was a huge success. Last week, we also had our first Shakespeare in the Park event. We were able to partner with a production company, Shakespeare and Clark Park, from Philadelphia. They brought a touring production out to Valley Creek, and even though the weather was a bit iffy, it turned out to be a beautiful night as well. We had about 70 people show up for that event, and hopefully the first of many theatrical productions in Valley Creek Park. Very excited to make that somewhat, hopefully, a tradition. Looking forward to the next couple of weeks, very busy time for Parks and Recreation. Currently, we have our MS4 work ongoing in our parks. Ecology Park currently is closed due to the work being done there. Tree removal, stream bank widening restoration, which will be hitting Valley Creek Park in the next coming weeks as well. So, residents do see a lot of work being done, trees being removed. That is to be expected with everything happening with all of this work. Aside from that, event-wise, we have our next Chill on the Hill concert series on June 18th. This is in partnership with WSPN. We're bringing a fantastic band called Billy Allen and the Polly's here to East Whiteland. Really kind of high-energy, southern funk-fusion rock. I don't know what to describe them as. They're just really, really awesome. And local Philadelphia kind of pop jazz, Sophie Karan is opening up for them. Going to be a fantastic bill next Wednesday night on June 18th. If you're available, please come out to support local music right here in your community. And after that, summer camp starts, and we're in the thick of summer, and all the craziness that happens with it. And that is kind of the big updates for Parks and Recreation.
Larry, just a question about the Chill on the Hill. Will anybody from XPN be out to present?
That is a good question. I do not know for sure. I gotta link up with our production team and see if we'll have any actual representatives out on that night, but I'm hoping.
And summer camp, is summer camp fully enrolled?
Summer camp is fully enrolled. We had to increase our capacity due to overwhelming demand. So, we have about 155 registrants, which is our largest camp ever, even larger than last year, which is again our largest camp ever. So, working with Director, Camp Director Michelle, our new Assistant Director Isa. We had a great summer plan with the most trips we've ever planned in the summer, and going to be at back at Caden Markley's anyway this year. So, lots of growing and expanding for Parks and Recreation for our programming, and hopefully just continue that train moving forward.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Are we working? Yes, okay, there we go. Okay, back to grant awards.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So, just one announcement for this evening. The board and the public might remember that last year, we had put forward a federal earmark request, which none of those were ultimately awarded. This is for Route 30 improvements that we've been talking about for some time now. The project scope is just shy of $9 million, which is a big amount to be able to do. So, we've amassed quite a bit of grant funding already, but we're putting in another $3 million earmark request for the fiscal year '26. This is tied to the federal budget adoption, so it will be predicated on whether or not that gets incorporated. I have one positive piece of information to share, that the township was successful in being placed on the final list that was put forward from Houlihan's office. So, that's an encouraging sign, although it's just a recommendation. It's not ultimately an approval. If the township's successful in receiving this $3 million earmark request, it will almost close the entire funding gap that we have. Next month, we'll be sharing another MTF grant application. We have been successful with these in the past. That would entirely close the funding gap. So, we've been very aggressive when it comes to pursuing grant funding for this project. But I also just want to assure the public and the board that while we're applying for this grant funding, we are also moving forward with preliminary engineering that's well underway, because we have grant funding secured for that. So, now that was a lot there, but it's a big project, so worth belaboring a bit.
The earmark process, that's congressional or presidential or effectively both?
Effectively both.
That's what I thought. Okay, alright. Okay, why don't we, is enough of the officers here yet, or no? Good enough? Okay, alright. We are, next we'll introduce our new officer, John McQueen. Related to Steve McQueen? No? Just asking.
I told him I wouldn't bring that up. I started calling him Steve McQueen, you know, I'm sure he's heard it a million times in his life. And I said, you know, I better stop now, because I'm probably going to introduce Steve tonight, so. In any event, I'd like to introduce our newest officer, John McQueen. John comes to us from, actually not very far. He grew up in Willistown Township and attended Great Valley High School. For some reason, he left and went to Brumall. That's another story. So, he's here tonight with his wife, Kristen, and his son, Wayne, and his two daughters, Alexia and Brianna, and I believe your mother.
Yes.
Is here also. So, they're here to support him tonight. He's, has a lot of experience. He worked at Penn State University Police Department, and the University of Pennsylvania Police Department, Bridgeport Police Department, and Chester County Prison. He has a lot of certifications and skills, all of which we're going to be utilizing. He's a certified Glock armor, AR-15 platform armor, municipal firearms instructor, community-oriented police officer, alert certified FEMA Incident Command System. He's an FTO, which is a Field Training Officer certified, and IPMBA bicycle officer. So, he brings a lot of experience to the table. And bring him on here to welcome him tonight and introduce him to the board.
I'll see you on the trail.
Yes.
Welcome. Thank you. You got a picture or something? Yeah, sure, yeah. Bring your family up? Yeah, yeah. If they want. They don't have to. Sure. Yeah, okay. Welcome. Good luck, good luck. Okay, oh, that's good. That's good. Yeah, come on up. It's part of the initiation. You have to do it.
I like to say trees. Trees. No, you said trees. I like trees.
You got it? Super. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Alright, next on the agenda, we have a presentation from and about the Great Valley Community Organization.
Alright. Alright. Good evening. My name is Tom Curran from the Great Valley Community Organization, GBCO. With me tonight is one of my board colleagues, Greg Wort. Greg is also an East Whiteland resident. Bud Haley, who is not an East Whiteland resident, but should be, with everything he's done as a, with his businesses here, could not make it tonight, as was Keith Walsh, who you've met with before. I really don't want to make this death by PowerPoint and go through every single slide. There's nothing worse.
Thank you.
So, and, and I want to start by saying that I think you know a lot of things. We've given you presentations about our mission statement and what we're trying to do. What I really want to talk about is the new things that we're offering to the community, and to talk to you about maybe following up with some additional support like you did previously. So, go ahead to the next slide, if you don't mind. I don't think I can, can I move this? No, okay. So, this is just our mission statement, and I'll point out one thing on this slide. To date, we've served and had people provide services to 15,000 people since 2001. We've been at this a long time. It took us much longer than I would like to open a community center, but it's never easy. You know, you've got to raise money and find appropriate spot and land and do it, but we finally did it. We opened in October 2023 with great support and cooperation from East Whiteland Township. So, next slide. So, we have Phase 1 open, which is 16,000 square feet. Many of the supervisors came out for the opening. It's multi-purpose courts and some community rooms. We've just recently added two outdoor basketball courts. So, this summer, we have almost 500 children playing. They'll be able to play indoors and outdoors. And then those courts also include the capability to play pickleball. The, you can see the range of sports programming. It's amazing, I think, because of the nature of the community now. Badminton has become a very popular sport in this community. So, we offer badminton along with pickleball. Volleyball, who Greg Wort's heading up. Our volleyball program is growing tremendously. Offering two weeks of camp, they've sold out almost instantaneously. Some of the community programs we offer, and I think this is important to talk about, is for 15 years, we've been running a program called Challenger Gym. The, started out by a physical therapist in the school district who said that special needs students were not getting enough of physical education activities. So, we started that program 15 years ago, and it's still running. We serve typically 50 to 60 kids once or twice a month that come out. And one of the great parts is we have typically have two high school students there buddying up with each one of the special needs students. So, it's a great volunteer activity. We have, we started recently an English language learning program. Every class has been sold out. So, we've had, and we've had a range. We, you know, we've had Spanish speakers, we've had Arabic speakers, we've had Indian speakers, so it's really been successful. We've run Medicare seminars, which have also, everyone has sold out. I don't know about you, but when I turned into Medicare, it was a, it was a nightmare. But having somebody to come in to walk you through it was really, we think, a great thing for the community. We have a cooperative agreement with the Chester County IU, where two days a week, we have special needs students, typically children on the autism spectrum, to come in and work at our facility. It's a great experience for them. They help us. We're looking to extend that to cooperate with the Boy Scout Troop 77 in Malvern, which is the first Boy Scout troop in the country, I believe, for children on the, on the spectrum. And the idea is the, you know, we've had a number of Boy Scout Eagle Scout projects with the troops here, but we want to see if we can get some Eagle Scout projects for those boys on the spectrum, and find something that they would qualify for an Eagle Scout project tailored to their capabilities and needs. We have the Seeing Eye Puppy Club comes in once a month for training. They have a training program for dogs for special needs, and they need a place to do their training. So, Sunday nights, we have the places filled with dogs for Seeing Eye Puppy Clubs. I'll give you, this is on a future slide, but a statistic that I'm really proud of. So far this school year, we've had 140 students provide volunteer service, almost 1,600 hours. I know for the Easter egg hunt, and Peter was there, we had, I think, 15 students there for the length of the extravaganza. We were there. We do the Walk for Pause for Brandywell Valley SPCA. I think Larry has my number on speed dial now. Every time there's a Parks and Recs activity, we're ready to support it. So, I think it's a great thing that students are giving back to the community. We partner with a lot of area nonprofits. Cradles to Crayon has a permanent donation site at our facility, as well as Home and a Sparrow. We run a food drive for Fraser Food Pantry every year. Next slide. We are starting new adult programming, and we initially were going to call it senior programming, but we think it's better in this environment to call it adult programming. We're starting a walking club and some fitness and wellness classes. One of the things I'm excited about is we're starting a, an adult computer literacy and security program to, so that, you know, learn what not to click on when you get an email. And what's great about the program, it's called Cyber Seniors. The program is designed so that you train high school students to be, train the adults. So, you'll have a class of 10 or 12 adults with three or four high school students, and they're actually providing the instruction. So, it's a really good program, another way to extend our volunteer activities. I'm stealing a line from, that I heard a number of years ago when we first started. We're always trying to promote intergenerational connections. There's nothing better than having activities like, whether it be, you know, cleaning up the property and having three generations of people there. You know, the adults working with the children and that, and, and I think we're uniquely qualified with what we do and what we offer to be able to provide those intergenerational connections. Next slide. The, these are some of the activities that we supported for the greater general, Great Valley community. Boy Scout troops we talked about. This year, we had the after-prom was at our facility, and it was tremendous. About 11 o'clock, 11:30, after the prom was over, there was 175 children came in. They had laser tag, they had great food set up, they had a casino for card games, and it was tremendous. Kids had a ball. And kudos to the high school prom committee, but this is what a community center ought to be able to do. You know, have a place for the children to go and be safe. Next slide. This is more towards what we've done with Great Valley, the extravaganza events, egg extravaganza. I think the bingo night was really successful. We had, I think, Larry will correct me if I'm wrong, 150 people for the bingo night. And what was funny, it was one of our board members won the 50-50 and gave the money back to the, the fire department. So, it, it worked out really well. We've had large, large continuum of volunteers for the East Whiteland Community Day, and I want to thank the township for enabling us to advertise our programs on the township newsletter, but we're doing the same thing. So, regularly Larry communicates upcoming events. We put them in our newsletter. We have roughly 7,000 people from the area on our email list. So, we think it's a good way to get out the message about East Whiteland activities. We know from our discussions with Larry, there's some interest in the township to having a community garden, and I think there's with the, on the adjacent school district property. And I think they've talked about an area on, near, next to our property that the farmer who leases that property would be willing to sublease to the township. I've had some volunteers and companies in the, that support us that would be willing to greatly assist to get that done. You know, the paving that to get access from our facility to there, so it, just to, I think a community garden would be a wonderful thing, and it would be something that the township can do in conjunction with GBCO. Next slide. Funding. Everybody, you know, all nonprofits, you're always concerned about funding. So, to date, we've received about $3.4 million in individual and corporate donations, and we got a $1.35 million RACP grant from the state. We got the grant. We're still, we're going through the process of getting reimbursed for all the expenses that we incurred, but we're confident we'll eventually get that. In terms of the township contributions, we've received three separate $100,000 contributions from Charlestown for their original agreement. We, in 2024, we received the $150,000 from East Whiteland, and Willistown contributed $100,000, and we've spoken with Willistown, and they're, we're under consideration for additional contributions. We do have a $2 million loan with Meridian that we're paying down, and we, you know, in this environment, no nonprofit wants to be, have debt. So, where, where any plans for expansion to the, to the building on the facilities, we'll, we'll pay off that first loan. And from a history point of view, we bought seven acres from the school district back in 2015, so that's what enabled us to get to where we are. Next slide. So, this is, this is as of April. You can see that every one of those dots, these are East Whiteland residents who have participated in GBCO programs. You'll get a lot more dots after the summer. Again, we'll have 450 children playing basketball, plus we have a summer camp every week of the summer, so they will add that on. So, one of the nice things about, I don't know, the Google Maps is, is pretty easy to pop on there every time you get additional participants, so. But that's the, what comes up when we plug in East Whiteland Township. Next slide. Just some pictures of the after-prom, which, you know, again, is, I'm, it was a great event. I was up much later than I am usually, but it was worth it, because I think the kids had a great time, and everybody was safe. It was well managed.
Just to clarify, that goes all night, correct?
I'm sorry?
Just to clarify, that goes all night, correct?
No.
No, okay.
So, the, the prom, it's a little different than when I think you and I went to a prom.
The former high school one.
Yeah, the prom ended at, I want to say 10:30, and then they had it set up with, with wristbands that you have to be in by, I think, 11:15, and then you stay till 2:30 in the morning. So, parents, you had drivers that were dropping them off and then coming back and picking up everyone at 2:30. So, once you left, you couldn't come back. So, it was well controlled. They had a lot of parents managing, making sure everybody was safe. So, it was 2:30 in the morning and ended, so it was, but it was good. I think that's it, but again, that is, go ahead. Sorry.
I just, I know you want future expansion. What, what would the future addition expansion be, building-wise?
So the plan that was, and what we laid out for the, in terms of the building, the building would basically double in size. We'd have two more multipurpose courts, but the biggest thing would be much, many more multipurpose rooms. You know, the whole front side would be rooms, and we would not dedicate any of those rooms to specific activities. The idea is maybe in the morning, you have, you know, classes for adults, and after school, maybe you have some school, after school tutoring activities. So it would be basically doubling, doubling the size of the facility and then adding a lot of multipurpose spaces.
You're not doing that.
Oh, okay, I thought it was me.
It's our sophisticated speaker system.
Or maybe somebody didn't like what I was saying.
No, not at all, not at all. That's not bad.
That was ideas.
Are you, you say you're pretty much, you know, capped with your capacity right now? So it's inevitable to lead?
No. Well, there are, there are times, for instance, our winter league this year had 870 children. That was as many as we can take. That's winter basketball. Summer basketball, we can take some more. We have capacity during the day, so people who want to play pickleball indoors in the air conditioning, we have capacity and badminton. So there are times of the year where we have more capacity than others.
How do you, how do you handle the daytime pickleball? Are you just a reservation system?
So we, there's an app out there where, it's called Team Reach, the same app that you use to schedule places like Bounce and some of the other local pickleball thing. And GBCO is one of the facilities that you, so you can reserve time. We also have some slots in the mornings where we have open play, so you can just come in and play. So we have people. We have about, I think on our list of people who've come in and played, something like 200 or 300 have come in to play pickleball at various times.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, and we will be in touch, put it that way.
That's great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. Okay, next item is Malvern Library. Mr. Holmes. I presume, right?
Should have had us open for the GBCO. Actually, the GBCO has been around for a long, I'm here on behalf of the Malvern Public Library, but I will say the GBCO has been around a long time, and they've been a great organization, so it's good to see that they're thriving and doing more things. But I am here, my name is Bill Holmes, I'm the president of the Malvern Public Library Board of Trustees. I'm here to give a brief update about the library and also talk about an event that we're having. I'm also here with Justine Fafara, who's our library director. I can't say new anymore, she's been here almost a year. I said new library director tonight, and I thought, I don't really need to say that anymore. So I can just say library director. My phone is not cooperating. What I wanted to do is just go over a couple of things with the library and also talk about the event that we're having. One of the things we did this year is try to become more strategic, so we met actually on Super Bowl Day morning, which was very stressful, and then tried to do this, but it was, it shows your dedication to the library. And we came up with five strategic initiatives. One was fundraising, which I'm going to get to in a minute. The next was to engage the Friends of the Library. We now have two new co-chairs who are going to help run the Friends, and we're looking for new members in case anybody is interested, who has an interest in helping the library. It's a great organization to support the library. The other thing we want to focus on is outreach to our stakeholders. That includes residents, businesses, schools, and others. We want to try to make sure we're serving the residents who are in most need of our services. So we're going to try to do more of that this year, and again, to make sure that they know all the services we have, as well as all the residents and all the townships we serve. Update our policies, yes, that's pretty boring, but it's, it's something that needs to be done. We've found that some of the policies that we have at the library are a little outdated, and you have to keep things like that current. We don't have a solicitor, so we really need to make sure we're okay with a lot of things. So the last thing, but certainly not least, is staff morale and development. We are a service organization after all, and we deal with the public, which can be challenging, as I'm sure you guys know. And because of that, we want to make sure, number one, that the employees are trained, and they're happy, and they know how to deal with, you know, difficult situations when they arise at the library. Very rare, but it does happen. The other thing I wanted to talk about, obviously, I was expecting you to have the flyer up there, but, okay, you have the other one, that's okay. I'm not going to go through all the statistics, I did that, I think, the last time I was here. Obviously, we do a lot with all the, all the townships that we serve. I think, one of the things I had, oh, just the checkouts alone, 84,000 items have been checked out at the Malvern Library. I mean, I don't think I have to go any further than that to note, to show how much, how much people use the library. But what I did want to promote tonight is the Pints with a Purpose, and it's on July 9th. It's, oh, it is there. Okay, good. That is obviously a much younger version of me, and you could tell I'm combining my two loves, love of beer and love of the library, and I'm very happy with the one, obviously. But it's on July 9th, it's at Locust Lane, so we are trying to partner with some of the local businesses for some of our events. And I do apologize to everybody up here that it's on your next board meeting, so. We could do two things, you could reschedule the meeting, or you can have your next meeting at Locust Lane, we would have plenty of room for that, so. I'll let you guys, you guys can talk it over, and I apologize for stirring this up a little bit in advance, so.
Yeah, if we move the executive session to the 8th, we could be there at 5:00, and this.
You're welcome.
Come here, and that might be a good idea.
You know what, I'm going to let you guys work out the details, or you can just try to end the meeting early, because you're, every meeting, you always need a drink afterwards, let's face it.
We always try to end the meetings early.
I will speak faster then. The thing is, we also have copies, if anybody's interested in the event, everybody's welcome. And the nice thing about it is you don't have to put up any money upfront. All of the tips, forget for, from the, for the guest bartenders like myself, go to the library. So just go there, have some drinks, and tip your bartenders generously, like you would any other happy hour. So the other thing I wanted to mention is we're also looking for sponsors for the event. I have flyers for that as well, there's different levels. With the levels come different types of recognition for whatever business or if an individual wanted to sponsor the event. We have had a number of businesses and individuals who already stepped forward to sponsor the event, and we are very thankful for their support. Trying to think if there's anything else. The other thing that we offer as recognition is just to note that we have 5,000 patrons. So when somebody does sponsor us or gets involved with us in this manner, we have a great outreach to a lot of people who are, you know, they support the library, and we encourage them to support the businesses who support us. So we find that's very important, so we make sure that the businesses are acknowledged, and we try to get our patrons to also patronize their businesses. The, so people always ask me, all right, well, what's this for, the money? So there are several things, let me just make sure I got these. One of the things, we, a lot of these are to support the children's programs, most importantly, the STEAM related programs. We also have, we need materials for our 3D printers, which are very popular. We also have to keep our nonfiction collection up to date, because just when you think you've had, you've read or seen the last book about Lincoln, there's always another Lincoln book coming up that everybody has to read, so we have to have it in the library. My favorite is still Team of Rivals, but not everybody agrees with that. But most importantly, it's to keep the lights on. We're open six days a week, we're open a number of hours during the day, and I remind people now that 20% of all of our funding comes from fundraising. So it's important to keep the library lights on by raising money, so that's why we're doing things like that, and we try to make it fun as well. The last thing I do want to say is I wanted to thank the board for increasing our contribution this year. It was very helpful, and it reduces the burden on us with fundraising, so we can focus on other things like improving any services that we provide, as well as expanding and trying to get into new services. So, and honestly, you guys have been great. I speak as a resident and as well as somebody who's on the library board and the, and the staff that works with the township, you guys have always been great, and we really appreciate your support. So with that, I'll take any questions. Oh, I also, one last thing, we have magnets over there as well, in case anybody's interested in some of our e-subscriptions, it helps you, hopefully I'm getting this right, okay, good, you know, if you want to, you know, get e-subscriptions at the library. So with that, if I'll entertain any questions from the board or anybody in the audience?
When do we make our contribution at the beginning of each year, based on the approved budget? Is that the timing of when we pay? Is it?
When do we?
Well, the bottom line is, we know you're good for the money, I mean, it's not the problem, not a complaint.
All right, never mind.
Yeah, we typically pay it in a lump sum, I'm not quite sure when we do.
I don't either, but.
Not yet.
Not yet? We'll make a point to cut the, cut the check.
The check is in the mail. Now, now, we, we know you guys will, you know, honor your commitment, so. Any other questions?
No, I don't have any, anybody else? No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, keep up the good work, we're happy to have you dedicated to it.
Thanks, guys, have a good night.
Next on the agenda is the Verizon Franchise Agreement Renewal. Public comment period, this is when specifically, under their rules, you put this out to public comment?
Yeah, so this is the most exciting part of the whole meeting.
Even though not many people know this, go ahead, go ahead.
I know we've been anxiously waiting for this part. So you're, you're right, as part of the Federal Cable Act, the township is required to solicit public comments regarding our franchise fee, our franchise renewal, excuse me, we have two of them, one's with Verizon and one is with Comcast. You're actually going to hear about both of them this year, lucky, lucky you. But just tonight, it's Verizon. So as part of the Federal Cable Act, the township is required as part of our renewal process with Verizon to solicit public feedback on Verizon's performance. This includes things such as work in the right of way, reliability issues at people's homes, there are also community services that are offered to the township itself, and so this is that, part of that process. It's called a public hearing, it's, it's not a typical public hearing, as we are familiar with here, but it's really just an opening up over the next 30 days that the township is accepting public feedback on Verizon's performance, including any comments from the board. The township is represented by Cohen Law Group, this is their specialty, they do franchise renewals for many Pennsylvania municipalities, so we are part of the Chester County Consortium of Municipalities that's using their firm for this purpose. So there'll be contact information placed on the township website for people to submit any public comments they have, and then next month, we'll report back if any comments are received. So unless the board has any comments or questions that we can pass along, this is just an announcement, the public comment period is open.
I have no questions.
I have none either. As far as performance goes, I think my wife took care of that with a phone call a couple weeks ago.
And that is covered in the franchise agreement, so.
Yes, this is just a public comment, we approve it at another date?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, on to board motions and resolutions. We have a Valley Forge Sewer Act 537 Plan to approve.
Yeah, this, this is, it's really a formality for us. Two municipalities that are a member of the authority, East Pike Land and Skokel Townships need capacity, another member community, our neighbor Tridiferen, has excess capacity they're willing to sell, and we just need to, because we're a member of the authority, we just need to acknowledge that, and the resolution also says that we're not interested in purchasing it, which we're not, because we have plenty of capacity ourselves in the plant. In fact, I think we have more capacity than any municipality.
So you're saying we're the, so you're saying we're the best?
We are the best.
Okay.
We'll go with that. Okay, any questions for anybody? No? Okay, I guess two of us, we can alternate. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22, 2025, for the Valley Forge Sewer Authority Act 537 Plan.
I'll second that.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And next is a very commendable event we're going to take on here. Catherine?
Thank you. Steve, did you want me to go first on this one? I know there were other comments, but I can summarize first. I know Scott had comments.
Yeah, you have an introduction of sorts, don't you?
I do.
Yeah, why don't you make your introduction, and then we'll see if the members that are present have anything to say, and then I'll read Scott's comments into the record.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you. So this is on your agenda this evening because as part of the journey we've been on with the Open Space Tax and Committee and Development over the last 18 months, it's culminated in the township's first potential purchase of property. The Open Space Committee is tasked with reviewing and recommending properties for purchase, and so they've done just that at their last month's meeting. The committee did review and recommend unanimously that the township move forward with the purchase of 52.1 acres of property in the extreme southwest corner of the township on Morstein Road, more specifically at 1469 Morstein Road. The property is referred to as the Ridley Springs Farm, so I know we've thrown a lot, around a lot of terms, but that is its official name as of right now, so when you hear us use that term, that's, that's what we're referring to. What will become of it next, well, after, assuming the board approves the purchase this evening, is settlement is scheduled for June 30th. The final purchase price is set at $4.7 million, of which the township's been successful in getting almost $2 million in grant funding to offset that cost, and then a portion will come from the general fund and also from the Open Space Fund. Further breakdowns available if residents are interested in contacting our office for that, and then we'll pretty quickly enter the master planning process, which will be a dynamic process of which we'll solicit public feedback. The Park and Rec Board will be involved in that, the Board of Supervisors, and also our Open Space Committee, so we're really excited for, for everyone's input as to what the township will use the property for going forward. But the most important thing is it's, will be preserved forever and utilized as open space. So it's commendable that this is the first purchase.
Thank you. I hope from my standpoint, the thing that struck me on this property, even though it's not all in East Whiteland, we, the seller required the entire farm to be purchased. It is the only township open space on the other side of Route 30 and the tracks. It was, you know, next to impossible to find open space on that side, certainly not where all the residences are along King Street. The only other open space is Immaculate College, which is quite a bit, but I don't think that is going anywhere anytime soon. So look forward to it, and we look forward to comment from the public on the future use of it.
Yeah, to follow. Yeah, to follow up with what Rich said and Catherine said, there's been a lot of steps to get to this point. It was a worthy cause to get here, and we're finally here. And now, we could enlist the feedback of everybody and start a whole new journey on this fantastic property that we will be purchasing June 30.
And I'll read comments on behalf of Scott Lambert, who, as Rich said at the beginning of the meeting, could not be here. "This transaction marks a significant milestone in our township's history, ensuring that this beautiful property will be preserved for future generations to enjoy. It also highlights the power of collaboration amongst local county and state governments, as well as a private property owner and a local institution, being Westchester University, working together in a unique way for the betterment of our community. While this was truly a team effort by the entire East Whiteland Township staff and Board of Supervisors, I want to especially recognize Assistant Township Manager Catherine Ricardo for her leadership in guiding this project to completion. While I am not present to officially cast my vote, I would respectfully request that the minutes reflect my full support to approve the resolution to approve the closing and purchase of the WCU Foundation property at 1469 Morstein Road."
Great. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Catherine. I'd like to make a motion.
I would love to. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the closing and purchase of the WCU Foundation property Ridley Springs at 1469 Morstein Road.
And I'll second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? That passes. Thank you. Okay, next is the fire engine purchase. Greg, or somebody?
Yeah, I'll just provide a brief introduction and see if you have questions, and if Greg wants to add anything. But at the beginning of the year, the township was looking at purchasing used engines, because our current engine is 10 years old and is becoming more and more prone to breakdowns. And the other engine is, it's a different type. It's known as a squad engine, and that's a 2019. And it's also starting to break down, so we are looking for backup. But in that process, demonstration engine became available to us at a slightly reduced price than you would have otherwise purchased it, which we were actually working on in conjunction with the volunteers. We are working on designing a new engine and placing that order soon. But because of the lag in production, we may not have received that engine for another four years. So, when this engine, it's made by a company named Pierce, became available, again, at a, because it's a demo, at a, you know, reduced price, staff thought it was a good idea, and is recommending that the board move ahead and purchase the engine. The engine will cost slightly less than $1 million. They're very expensive, not surprisingly. It's $988,900. And then, there will be some additional costs for what I'll just generally call the "upfit," meaning the mounting of equipment and some modifications to the engine at just slightly more than $100,000. The equipment for it, what we'll do is, we'll take equipment off the existing 2014 engine, and the Volunteer Association and the Fire Relief Association have both agreed to, or at least the Fire Association has, the volunteers have, the relief will hopefully soon put in about $130,000 to purchase the remaining equipment that will be necessary for the new engine.
What's the timing to actually have possession of it?
I spoke with the manufacturer yesterday, and they're taking it off of the demo phase, and they're not going to use it for that anymore. So, it's technically available immediately now, pending the modifications and the equipment mounting. So, we're anticipating roughly maybe two months from now, that that unit would be back here and ready to go in service. Roughly two months.
So, the manufacturer is doing the part, or some of the "upfit"?
Yes, they will do. Their shop is in Burdenhand, just outside of...
Lancaster.
intercourse in Burdenhand there. They will do the graphics, they will do the equipment mounting, and they will do the modifications right out of that shop. So, the truck is there. Once the contract would be signed, then they can, we can meet with them about the modifications, exactly what's going where, where the equipment's going to be mounted, and they can start working on that. So, right now, we're at the liberty of what their shop can get us in, but it should be soon.
Okay. And we wouldn't actually pay the full price until it's ready? Is that how it'll work?
So, I was talking with Steve earlier. So, we have two options. I talked with the manufacturer today. So, essentially, what we would pay for is the truck right now, as it sits itself. And then, we would pay the upgrades and the "upfit" when that is completed, is the two options that we have.
Okay, that's the option that the manufacturer has given us?
Correct.
Right?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Anybody? Yeah. Oh, you come up and name and address, and the usual routine.
Kyle Sheridan, 46, Carolene. To my understanding, in the past, the Volunteer Fire Company purchased these trucks with a donation from the township. Is this being fully bought by the township and be owned by the township?
Yeah, that's correct. This truck is being purchased and paid for, owned by the township. That's correct.
What's, have there, how much other bids have been looked into for this truck? Because I know a fair amount about the fireworks.
Yeah, I don't know if there were any available, but Greg, you would have been the one involved in searching for a new engine now?
Yeah, that's correct. So, we had started this process with the volunteers probably over a year and a half ago, and started the spec process. So, an RFP was sent out to several different vendors at that time. Bids were received. There were some conversations going throughout that process between the township and the Volunteer Fire Association. Both organizations came to the determination that the township would be purchasing the next fire engine for the department. At that time, we took the existing Pierce spec that we had available, and started working with the Pierce salesman. And since Pierce is a CoStarz dealer, we have CoStarz pricing on this fire engine that we're purchasing.
And the reason, one of the other reason why the township is purchasing and owning the engine, this first engine, is, as everyone is probably aware, the difficulty in getting more volunteers, not just here, but around the state, around the country, has just made it more necessary for us to hire more career, to carry out our responsibilities to the residents. And it just seemed logical, since a career is there 24/7, and another half-day too. It just seemed like that is the logical progression.
And since the township will then be owning it, I'm assuming township will be paying for the maintenance repairs as it ages?
That's a good question, and that has, that issue has not been discussed yet between the township and the current volunteer force. There are significant funds still in the volunteer entity, so that's, would be the next issue to discuss. One of the next issues, yeah.
And then, just last question. Since the township's starting to go more and more into paid staff and now buying equipment, is there a plan eventually to start to phase out the volunteers around here?
That is, that has been discussed at least about every meeting. Steve is the representative from the township to the fire board. I'm the treasurer. We do not want to phase out volunteers. We are working, there has been meetings, there will continue to be meetings, to try to work towards a function, you know, a role that the volunteers can fulfill. Taking into account, you know, they have full-time jobs, many, so it's, we're trying to come up with roles or functions that are realistic. We definitely don't want, we don't want to eliminate volunteers. We want to always have a place for them at the fire company in some role. We just have to recognize the difficulty when volunteers are volunteers, and they have a, typically have a full-time job, and it just, it makes it hard, you know?
And I just know, never mind. No, I've just lost my train of thought. It's all good. Thank you. Thank you.
So, we can, we're at the point to approve the purchase, correct? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Pierce engine purchase as described.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
If I could just add, Scott supports the purchase of the engine as well.
Okay, now, motions to award and advertise. John, paving.
Yes, we had a rebid for our 2025 paving project, and it went to Heidelberg Materials. Came in $30,000 less than the first bid, so worked in our favor. Normally, rebids are higher, but everything worked out. So, we're asking for a motion to award Heidelberg Materials,
I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025, to award the 2025 paving project, rebid to Heidelberg Materials Northeast LLC for the price of $559,156.69.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you.
What's the timing to...
Well, we go into contracts now. Normally, it takes about a month, so we're hoping by end of summer.
That's not bad.
Yeah. We have completion on September 30.
How does that interact with what's going on 29? There's no effect between the two, right?
No. The only road we have up there is part of Brennan Boulevard, up towards Vanguard, but everything else is away from that.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Okay, next is an ordinance to adopt the 2020-21 Uniform Construction Code.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. The, as an opted-in community, which means we follow the PA State UCC, or what's called the Building Code more commonly, the, we follow the timeframes that Pennsylvania typically adopts, the whole versions of the next UCC. So, that would be the 2021 version. Typically, they are a few years behind. There is a newer code, but it takes a little while for the state to catch up. So, we've been in a phase-in period for the last few years. So, as of July 13 of this year, the state's officially putting that into effect. So, because we've opted in, we're following suit with the state and doing the same. The UCC is adopted via ordinance, so we'll be repealing and replacing the prior version with the 2021 version. I'll just briefly outline, that includes the Building Code, Residential Code, Plumbing, Energy Conservation, Mechanical, Fuel, Gas, and Urban Wildland Interface Codes. We're also going to streamline the codes and renumber, essentially, them within the code itself, our code of ordinances, so that it's more easily utilized. They're separate chapters right now. A public hearing is required. We do have to give the Department of Labor and Industry 30 days to review, so we're not able to make that timeframe by July. So, we're requesting an August 13 public hearing and motion for the same.
So, this is just to approve the motion to advertise tonight, right? All right, I'll make a motion to authorize advertising ordinance 375, adoption of the 2021 Building Code for the August 13, 2025 meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, is it time for our exciting public hearings?
They are exciting. We have listed on the agenda three public hearings for this evening. I'm going to open each hearing, ask for any comments after we present the ordinances and the exhibits, and close the hearing for each individual ordinance, and then the board can vote on those. The first one we have listed is the Hotels, Motels and Inns Ordinance. That is number 372-2025. And I'm going to mark a series of exhibits for that public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing. The exhibits are the B1, the May 23, 2025 email and letter to the Daily Local News with the legal notice and proposed ordinance; B2, the May 23, 2025 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance; B3, the proof of publication; and B4, the proposed ordinance. This hotel, motel, and inn ordinance was worked on by Catherine and the Assistant Fire Marshal DJ Matthews. This is an inspection ordinance of the hotels, motels, and inns in the township. And in order to give the business owners some time, this ordinance will not be effective for 30 days. Most ordinances are effective usually five days after adoption. This one, we're giving 30 days, which is a little unique. But this was something that both Catherine and DJ and myself, we went through for several weeks. And this is basically setting forth how the hotels, motels, and inns in the township will be getting licenses and inspections done by the fire department. I don't know, Catherine, if you've had anything else to add.
Will this or these, this ordinance be sent to each hotel, motel, and inn, or has it already? Are they aware of it?
The Assistant Fire Marshal has been working on the public relations side of this, with letting some of our hotels know that this is coming. And we will be providing a letter along with text. And since there is a licensing requirement, we'll be sending out a courtesy notification in advance to all of the establishments that this covers to let them know.
Good. Anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Want to do this one?
If there's...
Oh, right.
Yeah, no, this is procedurally, if the board, and there's no one in the audience has any questions, we can close the public hearing, go back to the public meeting, and I would ask for a vote on the ordinance.
Okay. I'm good to make the motion. Yes. I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 372-2025, the Hotels, Motels and Inns Ordinance.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you. The second public hearing is for a, this is a zoning ordinance that we call the Workforce Housing Ordinance. This is an ordinance of the Township of East Whiteland creating a new Section 200-13.1 entitled "Workforce Housing," to establish a process for the development of housing in zoning districts where apartments are permitted, specifically designed and subsidized for middle and moderate income households. That is the title of the ordinance. The following are the exhibits. B1 is the May 9, 2025 filing with the Chester County Planning Commission. B2 is the May... B2 is the May 9th, 2025 email to East Whiteland Township Planning Commission with the proposed ordinance. B3 is the May 23rd, 2025 email and letter to the Daily Local News with the legal notice and proposed ordinance. B4 is the May 23rd, 2025 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B5 is the June 6th, 2025 review letter from the Chester County Planning Commission. B6, the proof of publication, and B7, the ordinance. This was discussed, I believe, at the last meeting of the township, and Zach Barner has been working on this, and this is in effect for, this would affect the apartments with 200 or more units that we're asking that for apartment developments with 100 units or more, at least 10%, but no more than 20% of the dwelling units in the development must be constructed with designated housing specifically for middle and moderate income households using, and it lists one or more of the following programs. I apologize, I said 200, it was 100.
Yeah, the intent of this ordinance is for the multifamily buildings that we have to help the landlord utilize some units to make it them more affordable for regular people. Everybody knows new apartment buildings these days are not inexpensive at all, and this is our attempt to have them carve out a portion of units to be more affordable.
Also, to follow up with what Rich is saying, this is something that our township is doing that is unique in Chester County as to date, I don't think anybody else that we know of is really doing.
Not in Chester County that we were aware of.
Any questions or comments from anybody? No? Okay.
If there's no questions or comments, I would close the public hearing and ask, as we go back to the public meeting, if we could have a vote on the enactment.
All right, I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 373-2025 on workforce housing.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And our third hearing, I'll open the public hearing, is for ordinance 374-2025 titled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of the Township of East Whiteland, Chapter 90, Fire Prevention, to Adopt the International Fire Code 2021 Edition, with Certain Additions, Insertions, and Changes to Standards." The following are the exhibits. B1 is the May 23rd, 2025 email and letter to the Daily Local News with legal notice and proposed ordinance. B2, the May 23rd, 2025 email and letter to the Law Library with a copy of the attested proposed ordinance. B3, the proof of publication, and B4, the proposed ordinance. This ordinance, again, we worked with the Assistant Fire Marshal DJ Matthews in reference to this, is to adopt the 2021 fire code, but with certain additions, deletions, insertions. Most notably, that there is dealing with some blasting procedures, you'll see on page four, there's a new section dealing with radioactive materials, and that there is other insertions and deletions, and there's a Board of Appeals, and that the Fire Marshal may from time to time employ technical experts. Kind of sums that up. I don't know Catherine if you wanted to add anything else to that.
Just one thing to add to that is the International Fire Code goes separately from the rest of the UCC, as we talked about earlier this evening, just so the board is aware, this is a separate code that stands alone apart from the rest of the UCC, so that's why you're seeing it separately.
Any questions, comments? No? Okay.
If there's no questions or comments, we'll close the public hearing, we'll go back to the public meeting, and I'll ask for a vote on enactment.
I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance number 374-2025, adoption of 2021 International Fire Code.
I'll second. Is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Does that mean we have passed 374 ordinances in 2025? I, I hope not, because I don't remember them. Okay, all right, just checking.
Excuse me, Scott just wanted to note that he supported all three ordinances.
Now with the planning and development, I'll consider and render a decision on land development 06-2024 for the Si Temple Worship Center, for the preliminary final development. Go ahead.
Sure. So at the meeting in April, the applicant presented their plans, received comments from the board. The board did authorize staff and solicited to draft an approval resolution with a series of conditions. We have drafted that, there's a number of standard conditions related to posting of financial security and other sort of boilerplate types of conditions, and then there's a handful of more project-specific, including some that require some post-development monitoring of traffic conditions, that requires the applicant to construct, if needed, some additional physical improvements. We signage striping or other types of improvements based on the findings of post-development traffic studies, so just based on sort of the uniqueness of the site and the traffic patterns associated with those types of events. Some of the things that the board discussed last month and some of the questions that were asked were related to membership, attendance at events, and sort of how that might relate to traffic impacts. So what the applicant has done sort of since the meeting in April was to revise the plans primarily in response to comments in the Bowman Traffic Review Letter. A lot of those previous comments have been updated, clarified. There was a meeting last week with the applicant's engineering team and our own to discuss sort of like the, I'll say the nuance of some of those comments, and how a further revised plan sort of post-approval, if that's where the board goes here this evening, just to clean up in response to some of those comments. I think there's pretty good clarity on, I'll say, the physical improvements, something we've discussed coming out of that meeting and something that was provided even today, an updated memo from the applicant's engineer, just kind of outlining a little bit more about the specifics of the worship services, events that are held, and some round numbers in terms of attendees at those events, just to kind of try to provide a little more context based on the discussion in April. So with that sort of table setting, I guess you'd say, I know the applicant's engineer and the applicant's representative are here, if the board has additional questions, if there's anything you'd like them to present or walk through, I'm sure they'd be happy to do so.
I don't have any additional questions, just the resolution that was drafted was sent to and approved by the applicant?
Yes, it's provided to them. I don't know if there's any comments. I did speak with Representative of the Engineer's Office, they seem to be okay. I'll give them the opportunity to clarify anything if there's anything that they wanted to put on the record or request to be revised in any way, but I believe they were primarily okay with everything as drafted, but I'll kick it over to John Ekman here in case there's any further clarifications needed.
Good evening, John Ekman with Naive Newell. Yes, we got the resolution, looked at it, I mean, I think it's all pretty well, we're just waiting, we gave it a pass it off to Lou Colagreco too, just to have him take his looks on it, but I mean, I think it covers what was discussed at last meetings or meetings with Bowman from last week, so no real comments on it from our end.
So that is the rub with this project, is everything looks great engineering-wise, landscape-wise, the Bowman letter is the really only concern that has the most comments on it, and you're.
Yeah, and so we met with Chris from Bowman last week, just to, we ran through the letter in its entirety, like Zach was mentioning, most of his comments in there, there's still just some more, a little bit of planned cleanup, but we talked through how that will be handled with Chris. He seemed in favor of those comments, so we just have to make the actual changes on the plans, but the path forward, we've talked with him.
Is Chris on the line?
Chris is not on the line, he's actually out of town today. You know what they will add on top of what John said is, normally Bowman does a great job of kind of outlining their comments in detail, it's not just like a code section that they reference, so I feel like there's a lot of clarity in here in terms of specific tweaks that still need to be made to the plan, so if the board's comfortable, just from a technical and a compliance standpoint, feel pretty good based on the conditions of the resolution, the reference to compliance with revealers, I feel like it's pretty clear what, what changes, what cleanup still needs to be made, but, so I just wanted to make sure that was, you know, spelled out a little bit. They're, they're pretty explicit in some of their comments.
No, I thank you for that, and this is an exciting development for the township. I mean, this is an unsightly area, and it is really going to revitalize that portion of our township to look 1,000 times better than it currently does, and thank you for your interest in revitalizing that. Yeah, to your point Zach, yeah, you're saying what's covered in the Bowman letter will be covered.
Yeah, I think coming out of the meeting last week, both the traffic engineer and staff, like myself, feel fairly confident. Usually the number of comments isn't always the best barometer on how ready a plan is. In this case, I think the number of comments is a little deceiving, because a lot of it is summary and specificity, but, so it's from my perspective, I don't see any major issues with.
From my perspective, it's tough to picture what all the comments mean without kind of standing out there with a tape measure.
Sure.
On Prospect and Plainbrook to, to see what everything kind of, how everything lays out, but I will trust in Bowman that they, you know, and you guys are going to do your due diligence to make.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make good on those comments.
And compliance with that letter and any other review letters that have any outstanding items that require plan, final plan revisions have to be made before the plan is recordable and construction can start, so it will be updated, I'm sure.
Oh, certainly, yeah, and we've, this resolution has evolved over time, but we explicitly spell out that it's prior to recording the final plan and prior to commencement of construction, all the conditions, all of those types of conditions anyway, are to be satisfied.
Yeah, I know I made a comment last meeting, that it would be a good idea not to allow right turns out of the parking area towards the residential street, but if you don't go right, you go left, and then if you have to go up to Lancaster, you have to fight with that light, so I'm going to leave that direction where drivers want it, try. And that's, that's all I.
And to that point, that's also why in the Bowman letter also, just the agreeing of, you know, a certain time after the project's completed, you know, we'll see, see which way the, the traffic patterns seem to be leaning towards there, and if needed, an adjustment needs to be made with that right turn or so, we'll, we'll make it.
I mean, a project like this, there would be no impact on the morning, the AM peak, for sure, and not likely the PM peak either. This would be maybe a what, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday?
Yeah, typically more on the weekend, during the, the week, not as much traffic goes through there.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any other questions, I think.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, Scott had some comments. While in theory I support this application, I have concerns on the following. The traffic assumptions remain ambiguous. The applicant must provide clarification regarding total membership, event details, i.e. number of attendees, frequency, time of large gatherings, maximum number of attendees. This information is critical to complete a thorough traffic evaluation. I have attended meetings where there have been indications that events may have 600 attendees, but there are only 128 parking spaces. So if they have 600 attendees for a service, that may be approximately 200, 240 cars, according to some math that Scott worked out. Plus, trying to enter and exit onto Plainbrook at or near the same time will be problematic. Until we evacuate confirmed numbers and signed off by the applicant, the current review letters may be reflecting the wrong assumptions. My suggestion is that due to the ambiguity surrounding the numbers, that an, that an extension be granted to allow the applicant more, to allow the applicant to provide accurate information, but any preliminary land development should contain conditions that allow the township to revisit the final land development if details change.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I acknowledge, understand the comments, and I think the response to that is with the resolution requiring a post-development traffic study that will, two things, post-development traffic study and just human behavior. If there are not enough seats or parking spaces, people will come to another service session. I mean, that's just, you know, how people work. So I'm comfortable with the resolution having condition for a post-development traffic study.
Agreed. Agreed. Want to make a motion?
Sure.
I would like to make a motion to approve the, the resolution or? Preliminary final land development resolution number 23-25 for land development 06-2024 Si Temple Worship Center, preliminary final development.
And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Good luck.
You're on your way.
What do you think your timing is to start? Hoped for, anyway. Right, okay. After the plans are revised, the plan is recorded, right? Yep, okay.
Yep, get it, get them there as quick as we can.
Okay, sounds good.
He's been waiting patiently.
Yeah, I know, it's been a while, yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, ready to go. There's no new resolutions to approve, the next item is three extensions of time for three developments. Pretty easy.
Yeah, the first one, do you want me to provide any sort of update? The first one really is a sort of a quasi-land development, I'll make it quick, I promise, to remove a portion of the parking lot and create some green space at the Penn State Great Valley Campus, there's been requests for some additional time to allow coordination on the, we have a sidewalk requirement through that for all new developments. In this case, it's a very long sidewalk, so we've been trying to coordinate with them on maybe some alternatives that would not be so cost prohibitive and require so much permit coordination with PennDOT, so that coordination is ongoing, we'll actually be meeting with them next week to discuss some additional ideas. The next one here is for Phase Two of the Great Valley Corporate Center redevelopment by Philly Suburban. At the meeting last month, there was some discussion of the existing mature trees along Great Valley Parkway, conflicts with utilities in the trail, we've got an updated sketch showing a revised layout of that, some of that coordination is ongoing, as well as some additional coordination required with the Historical Commission, I'm hoping they are planning to attend an upcoming meeting with them as well.
Just out of curiosity, were they, were they at the point where they removed the trail and just had the sidewalk and relocated it, or where were they?
So the, the alternative they provided, which will be further revised, is more of a trail layout that meanders around the trees, obviously, we're threading the needle here, you gotta avoid the utilities, which send you in the direction of a tree and vice versa, so they weren't able to save all of them, there's still some that I think, so Scott Lambert was out of the site visit with their engineer along with myself and Catherine, so there was still some that we were hoping they could tinker with a little bit and, and save more to put it playfully, I guess you'd say. I think they're hopeful that they're able to save some additional, but probably not, not all of the trees, so it's more of a trail than a sidewalk. There may be some narrower spots to kind of fit in between trees and such.
They're ending up with just the one trail, not a bike path and a sidewalk.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, good. That makes sense.
And the final one here is just a lotline revision for the Mountford Courts Mobile Home Park, we've issued. We've issued review letters. We've had very little update from the applicant. So we've requested an extension through July. I'm hopeful they'll revise the plans per those review letters and be before you next month. If not, we will follow up with them for an additional extension. It's a very simple project, but, you know, timelines are timelines. So that's the update on each of those three.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I'll make a motion to approve the extension of LD08-2024 for Penn State Great Valley to September 30, 2025. LD11-2024 for GVCC redevelopment till August 13, 2025. And SD01-2025 for Malvern Courts Mobile Home Park to July 31, 2025.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. No financial security releases, no zoning hearing boards to decide whether to attend or not, property maintenance and code enforcement update.
Thank you. Under zoning, the application for the ABFI Lincoln LLC matter, 20 Moore Hall Road, was again continued by the applicant. It's now most likely to be heard. They give the extension till the end of August. So the next zoning meeting that would fall on would be Monday, August 25, at 7:15 p.m. Under updates, staff has been tracking violations of our hours of work ordinance and taking appropriate actions against offenders. We remind everyone listening that noise-creating activities like construction are limited between the hours of 9:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. weekdays, and 9:00 p.m. and 9:00 a.m. on weekends and legal holidays, where you could be in violation of disturbing, under disturbing or peace and good order in our ordinances. The zoning department also has received numerous calls recently on the placement of sheds and accessory structures on residential properties. Residents are reminded that accessory structures are permitted after applying for and receiving at a minimum a zoning permit. These structures cannot be in front yards of properties and must maintain certain distances from adjoining properties and cannot exceed 15 feet in height. If you need more information, you can contact our office at any time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a public comment. Anyone? Yeah? Oh, who? Come on. You're coming up and name and address and... Good evening.
Paul Marshall. Over at Farm Boy Barbecue, 625 North Moore Hall.
Yes. Know it well.
This, this construction is killing us. This started in November, October 2023. Said they'll be done three months. Came back again in February, worked two months in 2024. Came back at the end of April, worked for three months. And then said that they were finished. And then they came back again at the very end of 2024 and said, oh, we're going to be here in February, and we're not going to finish until the end of June. Well, now they've got us all blocked. I have a letter that we all wrote, even with the Chamber of Commerce and every single small business in that whole center, including Wawa. I mean, Wawa's got their own people down there 20 hours a week.
Really?
And when you have the third busiest Wawa in the state cutting everyone's hours to 22 hours, I mean, just think about it. If you guys' revenue got cut in half overnight, I mean, this is killing us. So we've written our state representatives, see if there's anything within the PennDOT code that can help and give some relief grants or money to, to any of us. But we need, we need some pressure put on these guys, and we need you guys to help us with it.
John, what's, what do you understand the status to be?
Latest I heard would be the end of October.
Oh, you're kidding.
And they were walking, well, they took a walk. The communication with PennDOT, you know, they went to Wawa, but they didn't go to anyone else.
Is that right?
I mean, this is backed up all the way down, okay, from, from Atwater. This is blocked two miles down to the Desmond Hotel.
Right.
Constantly. So no one down there. When people come to go out for lunch, Google's rerouting everybody because it's a 20-minute hit.
Right.
7:30 in the morning, same thing. From Atwater all the way up to my house, I'm two miles up on Charlestown Road. It's just all the way backed up. And then it's all the way backed up again to, to Desmond simultaneously. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a cluster.
Yeah. I tried that once. I know exactly what you mean. Is there any contact we can make to the legislators in PennDOT to try to get something done or...
Yeah, I, I mean, I'd have to talk to John about who we try to reach out at PennDOT. But we can certainly try to move up the, I guess, the typical chain. And certainly, we could reach out to Senator Muth's office and Representative Howard's office. Yeah, we have good relations with both.
Yeah, please try. And if someone could then get in contact with Paul and the rest of the tenants there.
Yeah. We appreciate it. I mean, even Dunkin' Donuts has seen like 25% drop. Even Able Towing signed in, says their response times are like way down.
Sure.
Slow down.
Yeah. Yeah.
The only, the only people who, who have decent response times are huge fire trucks with a big loud horn. And I don't have one of those.
Nor do your customers.
You know, we should be doing double what we're doing now. This is the peak of our season, you know?
The warm weather. Yep. Okay.
So everyone knows, you know, maybe not everyone knows, but, you know, small businesses have about 30 days of cash capital. You know? At least the small businesses that run the engine of the country. And when you have to do this, you know, 30-day cash and then 30-day more, and then 30-day more, you know, that, that kind of wipes things out.
Sure.
So that's what we need help with. If you guys could really use your, your contacts and your influence, I mean, that would be greatly appreciated.
Sure. We'll try. And we'll keep you updated on whatever we learn, good or bad or just, you know, whatever we hear.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Sure. You didn't bring any platters with you, did you?
You know, I was tempted to. I thought...
I'm kidding.
I thought if I wait, I thought if I wait...
Because I'll go there.
And see what kind of results I get first.
I, I go there, so it's okay.
Mike Chain from the Desmond, everybody. I, I really came to reiterate what Paul's asking for, but I don't know that you can help. And, and somewhere here, there's liability. And, and you know, you, you go and say, okay, well, you know, they moved, moved from June to July. Now it's October. People are going out of business and somebody did not do something correct. And there's liability here that, that, you know, that it's on the, it's the, the burden is on the, on the people that are being hurt. But it's also a burden of, on the town. You know, this is going on. People can see this is going on. It's not like you just heard about it. And I'm not blaming anybody. I'm just saying that, that it's more than just making a call to PennDOT and saying, when are you going to be finished? Or, you know, don't pour so much cement down in the hall or... There's liability here that, that the township should be looking at. And the job probably wasn't done right to begin with, is what the rumor is. And it's a mess. And I know my son works for IMC. And he, to get to work from Phoenixville area, you know, he has to, he's, he's going all the way around to Route 30 and coming the other way. It's, it's really bad. So as, as you consider, as you consider solutions at all, someone should be doing something in, in regards to what's the source, what, what are, what the remedies are besides hurrying up. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's more, Paul's saying, you know, help, but I think it's a lot more to it than that. We're being hurt somewhat. I'm not, I'm not losing my business over it, but Paul is. And some other people are, too.
You know, $400,000 in lost, lost revenue in five months is a lot of money.
For him, it's like COVID all over again. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't, it shouldn't, I'm encouraging you to say more than, let's talk to PennDOT and hurry up. Somebody should be getting to the bottom of the problem. And, you know, who caused the, who caused the sinkholes? Who screwed up the repair? You know, all that stuff. So I'm not here to accuse anybody because I don't really know the facts.
We understand.
I, I think you should consider more than that. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we will. Anything else? Anyone? No? All right. Thank you. Let's see. Up to the consent agenda. I'll read the consent agenda. First, I approve the meeting minutes from May 14, 2025. Ratify payment of bills, $1,959,384.41. The Treasury report. Ratify the Scan-Tec proposal for $7,350. That involves scanning. Ratif... What's that? Ratify the purchase of 1,400 cubic yards of amended soil from Britton Industries for the Backton Hill Park basins for $46,130. It's, the soil is there. I rode by it on my bike.
Is, is it there already, John?
Yes, it is.
Yeah. No. If I may ask you to the mic, what, what's being done here? We're adding soil to the park?
This is to get these basins to work. We had to go through the whole modification process because they weren't functioning properly.
Oh, okay.
That whole process we went through with the repermitting. So this is the final step to put the amended soils in and finish it up.
Sheesh.
I guess this doesn't count towards our MS4 at all, I guess, right?
This one does not.
All right. Just checking. Okay. Approve the RGA proposal for Historic Resource Impact Study for 1469 Moore Steen Road for $13,499. That's the park. And approve the Comcast franchise renewal proposal from Cohen Law Group, knock to its seat $10,000.
I'd like to make a motion...
Okay.
To approve the consent agenda, the June 11, 2025 consent agenda as read.
Okay. And I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I get to do this? We're adjourned.